Everyone and welcome to the July 8th, 2021, meeting, work session and public hearing of the Penfield Planning Board. We'll begin the meeting with Pledge of Allegiance.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome, everyone. Welcome, people actually in person after, what?
Twenty months.
Twenty months. It's great to see everybody in, in the flesh, finally. Lori, would you please call the roll?
Sure. Hetskey?
Hetskey here.
Bastian?
Bastian here.
Burton?
Burton here.
Sangster?
Sangster here.
Weiser?
Weiser here.
Gray.
All right. So on June 25th, Governor Cuomo rescinded Executive Order 202.1 and 202.15, ending the suspension of certain provisions of the open meetings law. Therefore, this and future meetings will be held at the Town Hall and Town Hall will be open to the public. Public participation during the meeting, during our public hearings, will be accepted in the following ways. In person, in the Town Hall auditorium here, and we can explain the procedures once we get to that point, online at the town's website, which is www.penfield.org, and then you can click Live Meeting Video and submit a comment online that way. Or by phone, by calling 340-8771, area code 585. That's 585-340-8771. If you're uncomfortable attending meetings at Town Hall in person, the following remote viewing options are available. We're broadcast live on cable TV, Channel 1303, in the town of Penfield, and on streaming media devices like Roku, Apple TV, Amazon Fire via the Penfield TV app. And it is apparently free. I'm surprised that it's not another source of revenue. But you could also visit penfield.org and also penfieldtv.org. So with that, we have minutes from our work session of June 24th. Hopefully, everyone's had a chance to review them, and maybe we can entertain a motion to approve.
I move to approve.
Second.
Okay.
Hetskey?
Hetskey, aye.
Bastian?
Bastian, aye.
Burton?
Burton, aye.
All right. As you also may know that we're two people short, so cut us some slack. All right. Doug, you want to go through our tabled applications?
Okay. Prior to our tabled application, we do have a new business item, if you guys are interested in hearing that first. The Town Board has forwarded along a request to the Planning Board by way of the Comprehensive Plan Committee. As you're well aware, the Comprehensive Plan Committee's been meeting for the last couple of years, drafting the new comprehensive plan for 2020. That'll be the plan for the next 10 to 15 years. As part of that, through public information meetings and requests of residents and business owners, the Town Board has chosen to entertain some requests for rezoning. I believe there's a list of seven or eight properties here. The Town Board has set a public hearing on those rezonings as August 4th, and they are interested in getting the Planning Board's feedback and hopeful support in their thoughts on the possibility of rezoning the following properties. If you'd like, we can go through the full list and get your thoughts on each one, or if you guys have had a chance to review it and are comfortable with the list as is. It is still on a draft form, but we will be, this will be going before the Town Board soon.
Yeah, AJ, I went through this list. It seems like it's pretty appropriate for what they're proposing for the rezone. So to the extent that they're looking for some feedback from the Planning Board, I would be in favor of telling them. I think it's something they should move forward with.
How many are there? Eight, did you say?
At this time, we have nine. There are two others that the Comprehensive Plan Committee is still looking into. They'll be doing a site visit here in the next coming weeks and debating on those, but at this time, the nine in the list that was provided will be the ones going before the Town Board.
If you can do a one-minute summary of each one?
I can do that. First one on the list is 125 Panerama Trail. This is the Panerama Park subdivision. It's the Panerama Park Office Park. It's zoned light industrial. Prior to the zoning code in 1981, the portion along Panerama Trail had been zoned general business. That was rezoned from general business to light industrial. They're interested in changing it back to general business as businesses might fit in better along Panerama Trail.
Restaurants.
Restaurants, other, yeah, stores, instead of having office or manufacturing right along Panerama Trail.
Okay.
1423 Empire Boulevard is a vacant property as you're going up the hill on the east side. It is bifurcated between two zoning districts, between the La Salle's Landing and R120 zoning district. They are interested in zoning it to either fully La Salle's Landing, in keeping with many of the properties around there, or town home development, which allows for a little higher density than in the R120 section. There is some grade constraints on there, so it would help with clustering and act as a buffer between what is sort of the commercial and industrial zone in LLD and the residences up off of Mans Lane and Morningswood Lane to the east.
Which one is the Town Board leaning toward?
I don't know where the Town Board's at. I believe that'll be discussed further in the public hearing section. 1177 and 1179 Bay Road. 1177 is about, they're both about one-third of an acre. 1179 has a pre-existing non-conforming two-family structure. 1177 is vacant. It is on the border of the LB zoning district, heading south on Bay Road, and to the north is, I believe, all either R120 or R115. They are requesting it to be multi-residential. They would like to do another two-family structure on 1177. The Comprehensive Plan Committee was comfortable with it, acting as a buffer between the limited business and the single-family residential. 1271 Fairport Nine Mile Point Road, currently zoned RA2. It is directly south of the Abington Place subdivision, which was an incentive zoning subdivision approved by the Town Board a number of years ago on small, generally about quarter to third-acre lots. They are interested in upzoning that to R120 to allow for higher-density development. Since it is near other high-density development and it is within the sewer shed of, the sewers heading into Webster on State Road, it could support a little higher density than other areas on Fairport Nine Mile Point Road, which are still outside of the Super Bowl area. The next two are sort of cleanup. Allen's Creek Valley was approved back in 1984, '85. It is on Penfield Road on the south side, just as you pass Gentles Farm Market. It's currently zoned multi-residential. It is a townhome, exclusively townhome development. They're looking to rezone at staff's request from multi-residential to townhome, just so that what is there now fits with the zoning district. Likewise, right across the street is Ellison Heights Section 1, which is a townhome development. It is currently zoned MR as well. It exists as 14, I believe, townhomes, units, looking to change that to townhome, to keep being keeping with what's there. The next one is 2328 Browncroft Boulevard, the side of Glanville's Catering. It is currently zoned R120. There is a lot of constraints on that site. It is a pre-existing non-conforming. It's been there for a very long time. The site is surrounded by hills, wetlands, and around to Quake Creek. They're looking to do townhome to gain a little bit of density, but something that can be clustered down there. It is on sewers. It does have access to sewers. So they're hoping to get either that or, yeah, townhome development, dwelling. It would bring it back into greater compliance because it is surrounded by residences. It's sort of down on its own there. The next one is a section of Fairport Nine Mile Point Road, generally 2013 through 2039. I'll actually bring that up on the screen so I can better describe what's going on So it is a mix of BNR, LB, MR, and R120. There has been some discussions in the past with residents and others who have been interested in seeing a different use along that section of 250, as the commercial corridor around there has grown steadily since the 1960s. The intent would be to do a mix of MR, townhome, and business non-retailer BNR, which is our sort of neighborhood biz, it was formerly neighborhood business, but it's our lowest-intensity commercial use, usually used as a buffer between single-family residential and higher-density commercial. So the idea would be to zone several of the properties that are backing up to existing MR as MR, so that could either develop out in the future as apartments or other multi-residential structures, along the LB to BNR, to allow some transitional uses as you lead back into more of the residential section of Penfield, and townhomes along, across from the MR and the other higher-intensity residential uses, again, as a buffer to, between the park, lower-intensity residential or lower-density residential, and the business uses to the south.
Okay.
And those are the nine. The two others that the Comprehensive Plan will be looking at is 1468 and 1506 Empire Boulevard. They have not made a recommendation on that yet. They are looking, he's looking for La Salle's Landing. It is the vacant nursery as you're going up Empire Boulevard on the east side. And a section of Plank Road and Northrop Road, they're mostly farms at this time, but they're looking in the future as development has moved out on Jackson Road, and the availability of sewers may be coming to Jackson Road in the near future, either through a main run down Plank Road or a main down Jackson Road into the Webster system, as zoning from RR1 or RA2 to either RR1 or R120 in various locations.
Okay. Thanks for that quick summary.
I hope I did it justice.
So are they looking for a memo?
They're just looking for a memo.
What would you suggest we do, Pete? Just say, hey, we'll send a memo?
Well, if you want, I mean...
You could have, yeah, you could have staff draft a memo.
Maybe ask staff to draft a memo, and then you have a chance to review it at the next work session. Because you're, do you have another meeting?
This is our, August 12th is the next board meeting.
So it'll be after the meeting. So I think you should indicate now in the memo, you know, what you want the memo to say, because you don't have another chance to review before the Town Board hearing, I think, which is...
Well, I'd say that we're in support of the recommendations of the Comprehensive Plan and the Town Board's inclinations.
To defer to the Town Board's...
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm going to be real with it.
Wait, does that work?
Well, I mean, I think they're, are they looking for your recommendation or?
It's, it's there. They're just looking for, to see if the Planning Board would be supportive. They're casting a fairly wide net on this to see whether there are other boards that, you know, because you will be doing any site plan review if these are rezoned, you know, you'll be the ones doing the site plan review, whether your comfort level, having done many site plan reviews in other areas and other parts of town.
So I guess the memo then should say something that we're generally in support of the rezoning as presented.
Okay. Yep, I can do that.
There's a provision of the code that, where the Town Board has, they can, it's in 250-15.1, I think, is where the rezoning provisions are, and there's a, there's a paragraph in there that authorizes the Town Board to refer to the Planning Board for a recommendation on certain rezoning requests. So that's, I think, under the authority of that provision, that they're looking to you for a recommendation, so by background.
All right, so maybe we cite that section and...
I could do that as well, yep.
Somebody want to move it?
I'll move it.
Second.
Hetskey, aye.
Bastian?
Bastian, aye.
Burton?
Burton, aye.
All of you came for just this? Jerry?
Definitely.
And you're more than welcome to hang out. I know you love these meetings.
So you look like mine. See you later.
All right. Okay. Tabled application 21P-0018, 1810 and 1820, Fairport Nine Mile Point Road, the Penfield Heights Mixed Use Development.
You got to talk into the microphone.
Can you, can you not hear me as I'm?
Not, not well.
Okay. I'll speak a little closer to it here. Okay. 21P-0018, the Penfield Heights Mixed Use application. We received revised plans on, yesterday on July 7th. They were supporting the revised comments that we had received prior to the work session on June 24th. They have made various changes to the plans in support of the discussion the Board had at that meeting. One of the ones I would like to draw your attention to specifically is the Board was interested in ways that the parking lot in the retail building could possibly be reconfigured to shield the parking from view along 250, and they have proposed or show a alternate layout for the retail building and the parking lot supporting the retail building.
Yep. Everything else stays the same?
We've just started our review. We do know that they've, you know, based on the PRC comments that they had, they were looking into modifications to the layout that would support, you know, so widening or showing some wider sidewalks in areas where there had been some reductions in the sidewalk width, and working on some of the requests that you guys had made regarding showing ADA, ADA compliance with access to the open space areas, as well as just, actually I can, just showing more detail than the previous submission.
Okay.
If you'd like, we can have the...
So we've, we've just received these yesterday afternoon.
Yes, that's correct.
I have to confess, I've, the last 24 hours have been, I have not had an opportunity to really take a look at them. I'm not sure about my fellow board members. Seems to be a pretty lengthy, substantial submission. And I'm also potentially guessing that the town staff has not had a full opportunity to...
Yeah, we've just started our review of the revised plans.
Okay. So based on that, I mean, I guess I'd like to get some initial reaction from you to about the, you know, just at a quick glance, the retail switched around from, let's call it back to front, or north to west. Doug's got both the original submission up and the alternative, and just initial, any initial reactions to that?
I, I think what they presented as an alternative hits the mark perfectly. I mean, we're just looking to have a little more, a little more buffer from not seeing a lot of pavement from the main artery. I think this, I think this does the trick.
I believe the applicant would like to explain a little bit about the, the alternative layout, if you guys are open to hearing.
Okay. Briefly?
Is this, is this a public hearing or not?
It's not a public hearing. It's our, this is our work session portion.
Just real quick, one of the things, you know, we responded to the PRC comments, and I, and I do want to point out that what we came to agreement with the fire marshal about with regard to the secondary fire access was to use the access drive in the parking lot behind the retail of the original proposed layout. And that would not be possible to do in, with the, with our revised layout. We would not be able to have that second means of access, which was a comment repeated several times in the, in the PRC comments. So I would like to point that out. Also, I'm not really sure that we agree that this is a better solution. We agree that it's a, a different solution, but we don't agree that it's better. You know, we had anticipated making the entrance in the entrance driveway in the pedestrian corridor, the main pedestrian access. Now what we're doing is we're putting the fronts of businesses on a, on the street that doesn't have access to the business. So we, we believe that the original offers three, a better three-sided access to the building than does the alternative. But please, you know, we, we respect the idea of it, and would just like you to consider the point of the second means of access that we will not be able to achieve, and also what it really means to the user experience. I'm not entirely positive if the MUD goes to the south, the property to the south of us, but we're really trying to work the synergy between the properties across the street, as well as any new applications that come in with this. And I think from a pedestrian standpoint, the original configuration provides a, a little bit better user experience than the, than the alternative. But let's, and also ask you to consider, where do you see the parking from? A very short distance while traveling northbound, but if you're at the intersection and you're stopped, or you're at the west leg of that intersection coming across the street, you're seeing cars in the parking lot right next to the main entrance. I, I think the way that the users are going to experience this site, you're better off screening with the building the way it was originally proposed. But please, please give that your consideration. Thank you.
Okay. Thanks. Appreciate those points. I think all these are good points, and it's something that we need to review and discuss. I'm thinking we need to review the rest of the, the submissions that came in yesterday, and therefore, you know, not sure what else we can do tonight before we, before we continue that. So do we want, you want to move to table, or?
Yeah, I think so. That's right.
Okay.
I'll move to table.
Second.
Hetskey?
Hetskey, aye.
Bastian?
Bastian, aye.
Burton?
Burton, aye.
Okay. Thanks. Okay. That's the end of our, we don't have any other tabled applications, correct?
We don't have anything else for the work session tonight, no.
So do we need to do anything to get set up? It's been so long. I don't even know what to do to in-person public hearings anymore.
No, I just think we need to, if you guys closed out your work session and just announcing that you closed out your work session, that you'll be opening the public hearing.
All right. So we'll close out the work session portion of our meeting tonight and move on to the public hearing portion. And just as a matter of housekeeping, applicant representatives and applicants generally would like you to use that table there. You're fine now.
Okay.
But once the, once we open it up to public comment, the public comment, people who want to comment publicly will come to that. So I'll ask you to vacate your chair and, you know, give them an opportunity to occupy that table.
Okay.
Okay? All right. Once again, it's just about 7:00 o'clock, so really our, our old start time for our public hearings. And we can move on into the public hearing portion of the meeting. So good evening, everyone, again, and welcome to the July 8th, 2021, meeting of the Penfield Planning Board. I will read our statement that I'm supposed to read again. On June 25th, Governor Cuomo rescinded Executive Order 202.1 and 202.15, ending the suspension of certain provisions of the open meetings law. Therefore, this and future meetings will be held at the Town Hall, and the Town Hall will be open to the public. Public participation during the meeting will be accepted in the following ways. So in person, you can come, attend to, at the Town Hall in the auditorium here, online at the town's website by clicking Live Meeting Video, and I believe it's on the home screen.
That's right.
So if you go to penfield.org, there should be a link to this meeting, and you can submit comments online that way. And I have a computer screen here that I'm monitoring diligently, or as diligently as possible. And also, you can call in and, call in by phone by calling 585-340-8771, and the folks downstairs will put you in the queue, and then when the time comes, they'll patch you through to make your comments via phone. If you're uncomfortable attending the meeting at the Town Hall for whatever reason, the following remote viewing options are also available. We are live on cable TV, Channel 1303 in Penfield, and on streaming media devices like Roku, Apple TV, and Amazon Fire, and just look for the Penfield TV app. Also, we're streaming live on the penfield.org website and on penfieldtv.org. All right. With that, Doug, would you please read the first application, first and only application?
Yes.
You know what? Before you get to that, I just want to give folks watching, folks here in the auditorium, thank you for coming, number one. Number two, the way our system works is we are a board that has the responsibility and the authority to grant subdivision and site plan approval. So we're, our task and the reason that we exist is for land use and following the town of Penfield zoning codes for that purpose. The way we conduct our meetings in a public hearing is the applicant presents their project to the Planning Board. Then the board members will ask questions, concerns of the applicant, and sometimes those are answered right away, sometimes they're answered after the fact because they may not have the answers right away. Once that's done, we'll invite public participation. So people here in the Town Hall, you're welcome to come on up and, and you'll come up to the center table here, and please address your comments to the Board and not directly to the applicant. We hold these hearings so that we get public participation and comment, and we welcome We hold these hearings so that we get public participation and comment, and we welcome that. And during that time, we will also be looking at if there are online submissions and inbound phone calls. So I guess the only other thing would be if you have any cell phones or things like that that are turned on, please silence them. And any comments, please keep them related to the project that's being presented to us. Okay, thanks for the listening to my spiel. Go ahead, Doug.
All right, application number one, BME Associates, Town Lethbridge Lane East, Fairport, New York, 14450. On behalf of Pathstone Development Corporation, request under Chapter 250, Article 12-12.2 and Article 11-11.2 of the Code of the Town of Penfield for preliminary and final subdivision and site plan approval for a mixed-use facility including 136 residential apartments and two proposed buildings, 38,470 square feet of non-residential space, including a daycare facility and a 4,800-square-foot commercial building, all with associated site improvements on the existing 10.653-acre property located at 1801 and 1787 Fairport Nine Mile Point Road. The property is now or formerly owned by WRM Holdings III LLC and William Wickham and zoned mixed-use District MUD. Application number 21P-0020, SBL numbers 125.01-1-3.11 and 125.01-1-33.11.
Okay.
All right, so I'll get started. My name is Jason Sackett. I'm here representing Pathstone Development Corporation. Just want to first of all say thank you for allowing us to be here tonight. And I'll start with a quick overview of the project for you. So again, this development will be the new construction currently consisting of 136 units of workforce housing in two low-rise buildings. The current unit mix contains 27 one-bedroom units, 67 two-bedroom units, and 42 three-bedroom units. Rents will range from 677 to approximately 1,251, depending upon the bedroom size. Mira will touch on some of the more detailed design elements, but the design at a high level incorporates elements of nearby developments in the fabric of the community. The project will also feature commercial spaces, including a daycare and a retail building. In regard to funding, the total project costs are currently approximately $52 million and our proposed permanent sources include New York State HFA tax-exempt bonds, private investor equity, also some HFA loans, nicer-to-energy incentives, and some of deferred developer fee. So really next steps from the financing perspective, the primary founder, New York State HFA, they operate on what's called an open window basis, so we can present financing plans to them effectively anytime. So we're hoping to put a credible financing plan together, which would include obviously local approvals sometime this fall and then look to start construction sometime in 2022.
Okay. So, thank you, Jason. So I'm Peter Vires from BME Associates and I'm going to walk you through the site plan and more importantly, how the proposed project, in our opinion, complies with the mixed-use district, the design manual, and the principles of that district. As Doug read into the announcement, we are appearing before this board to request preliminary and final subdivision and site plan approval for the proposed mixed-use development project that would be located at 1801 Fairport Nine Mile Point Road. The property is located on the west side of New York State Route 250. It's the site of the former Grossman's Nursery Garden Store. The Penfield Square Mixed Use Development Project is located immediately to the south of the property. To the west of the property are the lands of the YMCA. To the north are remaining lands of Bill and Debbie Wickham. It's an agricultural field. And then there's frontage lot development, single-family homes along Route 250. And the east boundary of the property is Route 250 itself. The project occupies about 660 feet of frontage along Route 250. The property being proposed for development will total 10.65 acres. It is zoned MUD, mixed-use district, and it is designated as a Zone A core mixed-use area. Pathstone Development Corporation is proposing a mixed-use development that would consist of residential uses, commercial uses, office uses, a daycare use, and also public and civic open space. The project will consist of 136 one, two, and three-bedroom apartments, as Jason said, targeted as workforce housing. There will be over 38,000 square feet of non-residential space use within the mixed-use development. And that will consist of a myriad of uses, including a standalone 4,800-square-foot commercial building, first-floor third-party office space within what we're calling the first building, the building closest to Route 250. The second building will have on its first floor an 8,200-square-foot public daycare operation operated by a third party. Included within the buildings will be a rooftop terrace. And there will actually be over two acres of public civic space, both active and passive space, available for resident and public use as a component of the mixed-use component. A little bit more detail on the three buildings that are proposed from a site plan perspective. When I'm finished, Mira will go through the architectural design for you and how that evolved with this project. The first building, as we said, will be located along Route 250. It will contain 79 residential units. It will be four stories in height. So it'll have an approximate height of around 49 feet. The building's located about 110 feet off of the Route 250 right-of-way. And as we mentioned, its non-residential use, primary non-residential uses in that building will be the third-party office space along with the rooftop terrace. The second residential building located to the west of the first building will contain 57 residential units. It will be three stories in height, so it'll have a height of around 42 feet. It's located on the west side of the property. And its primary non-residential use in that building will be the first floor of the west wing of that building. And that will contain an 8,200-square-foot daycare facility along with a 5,000-square-foot outdoor playground area fenced in to be associated with the use of the daycare facility. The third building will be located up in the northeast corner of the property, close to Route 250. It will be a standalone, at this time it's proposed to be a standalone 4,800-square-foot, single-story commercial building. It's located about 40 feet off the right-of-way of Route 250. Pathstone is actually, I'm going to say gaining traction on attracting a tenant for that building and it does look like it would, could be a food establishment that has shown interest in locating in that building. The site plan that has been prepared and submitted for your review was prepared cognizant of the mixed-use design principles in the mixed-use design manual that the town has adopted for this district. A couple key components of that plan that we made sure to pay attention to was first pedestrian mobility, multimodal transportation. It's one of the key tenants of the mixed-use district. The primary component of that with this plan is what we've come to be known to be called the pedestrian spine, located through the center of the property. This, and it's really become the district's pedestrian spine. It was established with Penfield Square to the south. And there was a lot of conversation and discussion about how that pedestrian spine is a key cord or travel cord or ultimately getting hopefully up to Atlantic Avenue someday. This plan continues that. But what this plan does in combination to that is not only with the pedestrian spine, it proposes an extensive sidewalk network, north-south sidewalk corridors along Route 250 and along the complete street on the west property line, complemented by an east-west network of sidewalks that will connect the north-south corridors to each other. The second tenant of the mixed-use district that we wanted to pay particular attention to is the public civic space. Space that is, you know, the common term of green space, but being sure that it's civic space, that it will encourage activity, it will encourage public use, neighbor use, resident use. The key component of that space is centered around that pedestrian spine. It's over one acre in size. For comparison purposes, the public space down in Penfield Square to the south is around 28,000 square feet. It's just under, it's just around a half acre. So, you know, we're doubling the size of that to help you get a sense of perspective. And it's going to be complemented with active recreation areas. The spine itself will have pocket parks and seating areas built off it. And the key, one of the key components will be pedestrian-scale lighting and landscaping along that spine, which are detailed on the landscape plans that were submitted with the final site plan package that we received. So these two elements will continue a key component of this district that was established with Penfield Square to the south. And that is, and we believe that this pedestrian spine is going to support passive and active use of this civic space by the public, the surrounding population, whether they're in Penfield Square, whether they're visiting the Y, whether they live in the single-family homes along Route 250, plus the residents itself of this development. Our site plans that we submitted along with our letter of intent do identify how this project meets the goals of the mixed-use district. And some of the key goals within the design manual are, or within the district zoning, I should say, is, you know, is providing complete street design, providing public space, strong pedestrian connectivity, and architectural style. The project parameters, I'm going to go in a little bit more detail on the project parameters of how we feel we meet those guidelines as identified in the table, which is for the Zone A mixed-use, core mixed-use area within the design manual. At the 136 units on 10.65 acres, the density is proposed at 12.8 units per acre. The Core A zone allows up to 20 units per acre, so we're well within the parameters of density within the MUD. Building coverage on this site is proposed at 14.7 percent. Only 1.57 acres will be building coverage. The non-residential space and/or non-residential uses within this property will be, as we mentioned, over 38,000 square feet. That represents almost 19 percent of the total use or space allocated for uses within this project. The commercial, or excuse me, the common public civic space, that 2.2 acres of space designated for public use represents 21.3 percent of the total project area. The Core, the Zone A Core requires a minimum of 20 percent. Total green space on this project actually is over 4.3 acres. It represents 41 percent of the total project area. The Zone A Core requires a minimum of four uses, mixed uses, and we believe we meet that, if not exceed it. The uses being residential use, office use, the commercial use, the daycare use, and the public civic green space use. So our site plan layout has been designed with the principles that are established within the mixed-use district design manual and also some of the principles that this board worked hard on to establish with the Penfield Square development. We all recall those discussions of how the town understood with that approval that they were kind of setting a standard of what their vision was. And we feel what we have done with this plan is built upon that and did what we've talked about, which is we see this as it extends to the north and keeps going north ultimately to Atlantic Avenue, that we are, you know, establishing a pattern that the town feels is appropriate. So in doing that, just a couple of those sayings. First of all, as I've mentioned more than once, the pedestrian spine through the center. That is like one of the linchpins of this district of what we've come to know as the southwest quadrant of this district. We continue the sidewalk along Route 250, again, to provide a key pedestrian corridor along the state highway because that's the sidewalk system that goes, you know, south out of the district towards Wayland Road and ultimately to 441. We propose the extension of the complete street along the west side of the property. That's, I believe, is now known as Penfield Square Road. We will be extending that road, as you can see on the rendering, along the left-hand side. And that complete street contains all the components that the manual designates. It provides a 20-foot, excuse me, a 20-foot-wide driving surface, on-street parallel parking on both sides, an eight-foot-wide multimodal path or walk, a minimum 10-foot-wide tree lawn area between that path and the parallel parking, all contained within a 66-foot right-of-way. Access to this property will be achieved through using two existing driveways or curb cuts onto Route 250. We're proposing no new points of access. One point of access will be the existing signalized driveway of the YMCA Drive with Route 250. Our access is gained to that intersection through the extension of Penfield Square Road up into the property along the west property line. The second point of access is, excuse me, is the existing driveway access that currently serves the Grossman property and the Wickham property to the rear of it. That driveway will be improved to meet the DOT driveway access standards. But, and it will be a private road that's extended into the property. And, but it does include some complete street elements, and this came out of response to the sketch plan review. That street now does include on-street parallel parking. It does include street trees, excuse me, the tree lawn area that would be landscaped with street trees. The design of this component of the road, this north end of the site, was done in consultation with the PRC, primarily the engineering department, in the fact that this property could readily be connected to any future mixed-use development that occurs to the north. That as the complete street extends to the west and likely a public complete street then finds its way back out to 250, possibly at Suites Corners Road, this design would facilitate an extension and connection ultimately to that public street. A traffic study has been prepared for this project. It was submitted this week to the town, to the town engineer's office, town planning department, also to New York State DOT. Couple of components about that traffic study, just to identify for you is, first of all, the scope of the study went all the way to Atlantic Avenue to the north and all the way to Wayland Road to the south. The scope was approved, I guess is the better way to put it, with New York State DOT. In other words, the scope was presented to them. These were the intersections we were going to study, those things. And they agreed that that was the proper scope. Another key component of that study for your information, it does acknowledge the Penfield Heights application in that the fact that traffic generation, projected traffic generation from that development was also included as part of the background traffic. So this was not prepared in a vacuum, so to speak. And so that study has been prepared, submitted, and is for review. The study does, at a 30,000-foot view, I will tell you, the study does find that the YMCA access, signalized access, including the Penfield Heights background traffic, will operate at a satisfactory level of service with this development. It does recommend some signal timing adjustments at the Atlantic Avenue intersection and the Wayland Road intersection, things that DOT would handle. There is discussion in there about possibly the need for some lane improvements as it relates to Route 250 between the two driveways. And in discussions with the town engineer's office, in which I'm sure Mr. Valentine will discuss with you at workshop, is that I think how the town wants to approach that is they will handle that in consultation with DOT and consultation with Penfield Heights, making sure this is looked at holistically as it relates to the mixed-use district and what is the best access management plan for that district so that any developer dollars that are used are spent wisely. Okay, so that's just a quick summary on the traffic study. Parking on this property is, we provide parking for up to 255 vehicles on this property. That does include 18 land bank spaces. That does include 18 land bank spaces. The parking was achieved based on a demand of 1.5 spaces per residential unit, and that comes directly from the team at Passstone. They manage several multifamily properties, so they have a very good handle on the resident parking demand. We provided parking at a ratio of 4.5 spaces per thousand square feet for the commercial building, plus 11 spaces for the office building. We also designated 20 spaces for the daycare use. The daycare use also, as you can see on the rendering on the left-hand side, does include a drop-off loop, which is obviously a very common practice for daycare uses. One thing I'd like to draw your attention to on the rendering, because it was a comment that we, we heard at the sketch plan review, was originally that parking, the parking areas to the north of the buildings, the comment was, was that looked too much like a shopping center or an office park. There was a mass of parking. I hope what you can see here that the rendering illustrates is what we have done is we've introduced larger-scale green islands in here, kind of going east to west or right to left across the drawing, such that really, as you see those parking areas now, no single parking, the average number of spaces in those parking areas is anywhere from as low as 35 spaces to 42 spaces. So in other words, we, we've broken them down, we've done oversized islands along the drive aisle, so that we can be sure, we can plant those with trees, you know, to...
Did it survive?
Yes, that, right, will survive plowing, salting. So we paid particular attention to that, and we took some parking out of the fields and introduced it as on-street parking along the, along the roadway along the north, and also introduced on-street parking along the fire lane along the south side of the building. So we believe this project does provide multimodal traffic circulation through the site for vehicles, cyclists, and pedestrians. As I mentioned, there are three, we believe, three strong north-south pedestrian traffic corridors, as we've mentioned, the 250 sidewalk, the pedestrian spine, and the eight-foot wide walkway along the complete street. As shown on the rendering, there is a network of east-west sidewalks, and these achieve several goals. First of all, it connects the three north-south corridors to each other. It connects the buildings within the property to the public and civic spaces, and it connects the mixed uses, the five or four or five mixed uses in here, with each other. So we feel we have a very strong pedestrian plan that will allow people to move not only throughout the property, but as currently developed, to the south. There are three points of pedestrian access, to Penfield Square to the south and to the YMCA. The project does provide the necessary fire lanes as required by the fire marshal, that primarily is the lane around the south side, but as, again, we have tried to enhance that, there is sidewalk located along it, there is landscaping located along it. We also provide two drop-offs, or I should say, a drop-off to the front of each residential building. Another, beyond the multimodal and the pedestrian component, there is also, the other key component we feel in this plan beyond the building, which I'll let Mira talk about here shortly, is there is a, what we believe is a robust and active open space, green space, civic space plan for the project. We see the civic space in the center of the site being the linchpin of this. This is the linchpin of the public space. As I mentioned, it's over an acre in size. It's focused around the 16-foot wide pedestrian spine that matches the same dimension as in Penfield Square. But as, as, and if you look in closer detail provided in the plans, as you come along that spine, first of all, we did put a little curvilinear design into it, but we do designate, you know, bumpouts, seating areas, whatnot. One of the charges we had received from Passstone was they wanted to create areas where residents or the public could gather outdoors in a safe environment in a post-COVID world. That was very important to them. They've got some experience with some other projects that were under development with COVID, and that was one of the things they were hearing from their residents. They wanted spaces, because we all know what that was, of, you needed to be outside to be with people, but you needed to make sure it was safe, convenient, and, and so that was a charge we received. So that's why we really focused on creating these pocket, we're calling them pocket parks, but these, these, these bumpout areas. That was important to Passstone. In addition to those, two other primary components is there is a designated, at this time, a designated dog park area, that pets will be allowed in the residences, and also, again, being along the spine, it is open to the public. And then just to the south of that, the gray box that you see on the rendering, is a hardcore flex space area. In other words, it'll be a hardcore surface, but it can be set up from everything to playing pickleball, to basketball, whatever. It is to be a flex space, a, you know, to be used by people as, if they are within the area. And as we mentioned, and there will be pedestrian scale landscaping and lighting. Moving beyond this public civic space, though, to the left and right of it, is that each residential building will have its own distinct courtyard area, and these, at the request of the sketch plan review, there were actually details of these provided in your final site plan applications. Thank you, Doug. The one to the right, which is building one, that is being established primarily as kind of a family area, a young child area. In other words, the focal point of that will be a playground. So that circle you see in there, that's going to house a playground for children. And then, as you can see around the outside perimeter, there's areas designated for benches, a gazebo, in other words, for adults, parents, whatever, watch their toddlers, converse, whatever. So that's going to be kind of an active youth area. The second building, this space has been more designated to be for, I will say, larger gatherings of families, adults, teens, there's down in the lower right-hand corner, those are, you know, intended to be, again, recreation spaces, whether it's, those, the exhibit you see there is for cornhole games, for instance. There's outdoor, an outdoor kitchen planned for the area for use by the residents, seating areas, whatnot. You will see along the left-hand side, a very robust landscape plan. That is there because that, you see the four black triangles, those are the emergency access or the outdoor access for the daycare uses, for the daycare rooms. That'll be fenced to get them access to the, the outdoor playground. So we wanted to make sure we landscape that to buffer those two, you know, the uses, the day, when the children are in the daycare, if people are using that outdoor area. So there was, there was thought put into that. Couple other, just to comment, or components of the overall open space plan, up in the northwest corner of the property, they're thinking that's going to be an area they'll designate as a, a community garden area. The, the small brown box you see there is going to be their, their maintenance building, but that would also then, also, if you're familiar with community gardens, you, you need to have something that contains the garden tools and things like that. So that's their thought process there, is that would also help house that, those materials for the residents. And then the last item that we want to identify is the outdoor playground area associated with, with the daycare. It's that gray area there. Thank you, Doug. Associated with that. Point being is, the result of all of this, which I think achieves a very key goal of this mixed-use district, if everything we've just described is, think about it this way, is we've got a variety of outdoor spaces that provide a variety of passive and active uses. And I think that's the key to success of, of having this space used, in the fact that you don't try to just do one thing, you provide a lot of variety that can appeal to a lot of people. You can vision walking down that spine and seeing people in the dog park with their dog, while some people are either playing pickleball or paddleball in the flex court space, while people are talking, one of the seating areas, there's people using the outdoor kitchen, there's children in the, in the daycare playground, there's people up gardening. While maybe it's not all public, all private, but the fact is, it's all activity, and I think that's important. That becomes the attraction, the draw to people, you know, and so we think, you know, creating an active recreation component as the civic space is, you know, it complements the YMCA, but it also provides active space even for the residents of Penfield Square, or as we said, may what happens north. So, you know, we think we've, you know, that this sets the right tone for, for that space. Getting in a little bit on the, the site plans themselves, our application did include complete landscape and lighting plans, you know, landscaping identifying the street trees to be planted, the landscaping of the parking islands, the green spaces that will be landscaping, and as we've already seen, the courtyard details. Lighting on the property, all lighting will be LED lighting, the street and the parking lot lighting, those will be 18-foot poles. The pedestrian lighting, which will be primarily along the spine, we will have a number, a fewer number of pedestrian lights at 14-foot poles, and then those will be complemented with bollards, 42-inch bollards. So the 14-foot poles provide a little bit more of a security-type feel, and then the bollards obviously provide the accent lighting. We had to, we wanted to be sensitive with the pedestrian lighting through there, because we do have the residents. We have first-floor residences, and obviously we don't want lights shining in to first-floor The project will be served by public water through a Monroe County Water Authority. Their water mains on the west side of Route 250. It will be served by public sanitary sewer. That's going to be extended up from Penfield Square. The submission included a comprehensive stormwater management plan. This property drains east to west from Route 250 to the YMCA lands. We will continue to maintain that drainage pattern. A stormwater management facility will be located on the west side of the public street. That facility will act as a buffer, because just to the west of that are actually DEC wetlands that are located on the YMCA lands, but slightly encroach, encroach into our property. Those wetlands have been delineated with the DEC. The delineation's been accepted, and as you can see on this detail, there is no proposed encroachment or disturbance to the wetland or its buffer area. The stormwater management facility has been sized to provide the necessary water quality treatment and, and the attenuation of the stormwater volume runoffs. Its discharge will actually be to, there's an existing storm sewer pipe on there now that drains the Wickham property. That is what we will connect to. So we're not even going to be disturbing what is the current stormwater discharge from this property into the wetland area. We did provide you a complete engineer's report in support of the application, containing all the calculations data, everything that we need to provide to support the design we've presented to you. One other component we have to be sure to address with you this evening is the project does include a subdivision. This parcel is dug right into the introduction, does contain two tax parcels. One parcel is five acres. It is the piece along 250. It is the former Grossman's lot. The other 5.65 acres that we are using to create the overall 10.65 acres is actually being subdivided out of a 15-acre parcel. Thank you, Doug. This illustrates it well. The 15-acre parcel owned by Bill and Debbie Wegman, or Wickham, excuse me, they are, you know, they are selling the 5.65 acres, which contains the existing house, to Passstone. And they, the Wickhams, will retain the northern, just nine acres worth of land, and they will use that same roadway we're building to continue to access that agricultural field that they will continue to farm to the north. So there is a subdivision component. We have to subdivide off the 5.65 acres from Wickham, and we have to combine it with the five-acre parcel of Grossman. So actually, we're, we're starting with two tax ID numbers, we're going to end with two tax ID numbers. The project is a Type 1 action under SEAKER, and we did prepare the Part 1 of the Environmental Assessment Form, the long form, and have submitted that for your review. We would request that the planning board do designate themselves to be lead agency for the coordinated review under SEAKER. Last couple of things I have, just, I wanted to identify a few things we included with our application materials. There were three or four memos that we provided. One was a memo that addressed the 10 principles of the mixed-use, of mixed-use design that we are required to provide to you as part of this application. We also provided you the memo that addressed the, as contained in Chapter 250 of the zoning code, the factors for consideration for subdivision and site plan review. We also provided you a memo that provided written responses to this board's sketch plan review, your sketch plan review letter of May 13th. And we also provided you a letter that provided written responses to the PRC's sketch plan review letter of March 29th. Can discuss any of those tonight or at a, at the workshop session. I don't intend to go through them all. The last thing, we did receive the most recent PRC memo, the one prepared in response to this application dated July 1st. We will provide written responses to that prior to your next workshop session and our review of those comments. We do not see anything that is going to, we do not believe will provide a challenge to us to address to their satisfaction. So with that, I'm now going to turn it over to Mira, that's going to walk you through the building architecture.
So, just a comment before we, before we get on to the building design. I, I'd just like to say that it appears that you were actually listening to us when we were conducting these meetings using Zoom. For 20 months, we weren't sure whether people could hear us or, or not. They just smiled and nodded, but it, I'm, I'm, I'm impressed with how you were able to capture a lot of sometimes muted dialogue and, and incorporate a lot of the things that we were talking about, specifically with the parking and the buffering and the, and the green space and those kinds of things that, you know, can really make or break the project from the public's standpoint. I did want to point out a couple of things, though. You've, you've added some small perpendicular and parking, parallel parking areas along the roadway here. So because there are entrances in the buildings adjacent to that, you're going to have to provide accessible parking. Each one of those parking areas has to have at least one accessible space.
Correct.
So those, those will need to be incorporated. I'd also like to note that, very clever the way that you added the 18 land bank spaces to, to the front there.
Mm-hmm.
Touche.
[laughing]
So, please, go ahead.
Thank you.
Thank you. My name is Mira Mchubavsky. I'm an architect with Pesser Associates, and I had a great pleasure to design, work with the design team on this project. I would like to start talking about the building footprint. There was a lot of thought put into design of the building, starting with the footprint and the shape of the footprint. You know, Peter here talked a lot about site design and courtyard. All that is tied together with the building shape and how the building interacts with the exterior spaces. It's, you know, it's not an accident that the buildings are U-shaped, and it's not an accident that they are oriented the way they are oriented. It's, it's science. They're U-shaped because we wanted to provide courtyards for the residents, and there is nothing better than a U-shaped building that provides protection from the wind and shade on three sides with one side open. And it's not an accident that buildings are oriented with the courtyards being to the south. We wanted the courtyards to have a lot of sun. We didn't want them to be in the shade. If they have a lot of sun, they will have trees and shrubs and flowers growing, you know, much better than if they were, would have been on another side. So all that had been thought through. Also, the entrances to both buildings are in the middle, and as you walk into the build or open the door, front door into the building, there is that transparency. Just imagine you walk into the building, you have a glass, and then you have a glass right across from you, and you see that courtyard. So it gives you a completely different, brings you into a completely different environment where you connect interior with exterior spaces, and every building will look more spacious and more friendly to people who live there. So there are 136 units in both buildings, ranging So, there are 136 units in both buildings, ranging from one to three-bedroom units, and with square footages between 700 square feet to 1,000 square feet. They, these are good-sized apartments, and they are fully equipped with the full-size kitchen, bathroom, bulk storage inside of the units, laundry inside of the units, and the buildings in their own have a lot of common spaces, like community rooms, exercise room, computer room, and we're talking about each building, lounges and breakout spaces, you know, in addition to the commercial spaces and offices and so on. So, you know, these are very well thought-through buildings that will serve well to the tenants. Talking about exterior treatment of them, they, exterior design of the building, the first and foremost, we looked at following the code of town of Pembfield and following their design guidelines that state that the buildings have to complement the surrounding area and create visual interest and continuity, and that is what we were trying to achieve. This building is located in residential space, suburban residential space, with the benefit of a farmland right across the street. So, it's a combination of, of nature and conveniences, which is very great opportunity for, for design ideas. Another hand, this building is located right next to newly-built Pembfield, Pembfield Square, senior development and YMCA. So, in, in this, in the colors of the building, we were trying to complement everything in the surrounding area, well, not everything, but tastefully combine the best features of the surrounding areas, so that this building is complementing the Pembfield Square in the color of the base colors of the building, but then at the same time, it brings in the burgundy or dark red and barn colors of the, of the barns and, yeah, and the farmhouse across the street or down the road. It utilizes durable materials like brick and stone on the first floor, and these same materials are being used in Pembfield Gardens and YMCA down the road. The building, there are two buildings, and they are, as you saw that the footprint is same but like mirror image of each other, but we, we specifically designed the, architecturally designed the buildings to look different, that would provide a visual diversity of the building, of the complex. And the first building is four stories high, it has more contemporary features, it's like a parapet, the trim, that's with, with wall panels that have that contemporary feel, and balcony at the corner of the building, stacked balconies of the corner of the building with those accent color panels create a very nice accent and focal point for the drivers that come down the road or up the road on 250. The second building is three stories high, and it's designed in more traditional style. It has a mansard roof, and balconies are more pronounced, and the whole, the building looks much more traditional. The, so, as you look at this whole development, if you combine this, you know, if you look at both buildings together, they create a very, I think, a very pleasant architecturally interesting and comfortable for the tenants residential development. I do not know developments of that type in Pembfield yet, and I think this will be a great example for future growth and a great asset for the town. And I'm open for questions.
Thank you. Are we, are you done?
Do you want more? Yes, no, yes, we're done.
I'm just asking. Who wants to start? Bill, you want to, you want to start off?
Yeah, I have a couple of questions.
Nice presentation, by the way.
Thank you.
Thanks. Peter, in our notes here, we have that the applicant, oh, sorry, that currently it's proposed one four-story building and one three-story building, but the applicant would like to have the option of making the three-story building a four-story building, that right now it's a three-story building based on the cost of materials. Is that true?
That is correct, yes. And we understand that, that if the decision is made to go to four stories, that we would like, we would have to redo the public hearing because we'd have to re-advertise and whatnot. Their, Pastone is updating their market study on that, and I don't know, Jason, if you want to speak to that. Point being, that decision's going to get made sooner than later.
Right. Okay, well, my, my concern is, right now, your percentages of non-residential use, I believe is 19%.
Yes.
So, if you go to a four-story building, you're going to have to compensate.
Fully aware of that, yes.
Okay.
Yes.
All right, I just wanted to, to make sure you're aware of that.
Yep.
Now, one thing I haven't seen on, on the, on the architecturals is dumpster locations?
Do you want to answer that, Mira, of what we've discussed about that?
Yes, the dumpster.
Well, that we're not, we're not, that's, we're not, it's going to be interior trash collection, and then totes would be brought out on trash collection day.
Okay.
There's no dumpsters proposed.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure of that.
Yep, yeah, there's, so there's interior trash rooms.
And that will be?
That's like a lot of totes coming out of trash collection.
It's, it's what Pembfield Square does also. Yeah, because actually, we drove through there today, it was garbage day, right, Mike? So.
Well, we have two trash rooms on every floor, I'm sorry, two trash rooms on every floor in two locations, so dumpster would be.
So, there's provisions for odor control and so forth?
There's also a potential difference in the amount of trash between a family of five living in a three-bedroom unit versus, you know, a couple of 85-year-olds. I know, just for myself, the amount of trash that we generate with grown-up kids that have moved out, way less than we used to, so.
Yeah, so what we'll do then is, for the workshop session, we can provide, whether it's an outline or a description of basically how trash is going to be managed and handled, so that you have that.
Okay, okay. I know where I work, we have dumpsters interior, and there's a big issue with odor control, I mean, just basic stuff, so.
Okay.
Will this be a phased project, or will it be built all at once?
So, I can speak to that. The construction period, we typically see anywhere between 15 and 18 months, so I would suspect that there would be some phasing, but the project as a whole would essentially be built at the same time. So, the footprint of one building may be used as lay-down space by the general contractor initially, and then sort of flip-flop. So, the buildings would come online by floor in phases, and then, you know, the development would be constructed at the same time in a global sense.
Okay, all right. Is there any consideration to increase your 19% non-residential to 20 or more percent as the mixed-use development recommends?
We understand that, we understand that requirement, and that is something we're continuing to look at. In the letter of intent we submitted, part of that is, is we, we are requesting that that is a discussion I am with the board. While we understand the requirement, that there is a requirement, I, we kind of want to counter, counter that with what is the quality of that space, too, but we understand, just as I answered your other question, we, we know where we're at on that number, and know that it, it's something that's got to get resolved with this board.
Okay. And my last question is going back to my first question. If the applicant decides to create or build a four-story building for building number two, I believe, Peter, you said you're currently at 42-feet height?
Right.
Will you maintain that under 55 if it goes to four stories?
I'm going to answer that from Mira, and that, yes, because we had originally.
Eleven feet floor to floor. You had another floor, it's 42.
Okay, all right, thank you. I'll stop for now, AJ.
The pond on the west side, southwest corner of the property, retention or detention?
Both, I mean, that, in the fact that the DEC, New York State DEC Design Manual requires, they establish the design criteria, and the fact is, it will hold water, it will retain water at all times. There will be a pool area, average depth, like?
Six feet.
Average depth of six feet, but then as the storm events occur, it'll pond higher, and then that water will recede, but there will be a maintained pool elevation.
Okay. The big rectangle in the middle of the parking lot on the east side, north of building, do you call it building two, or one, or B, or A, or what?
Building one's closest to 250.
What, I appreciate the, the breakup of the pavement.
Mm-hmm.
Is it going to be just lawn, or what's the plan for that?
So, the plan, I'm going to say we don't know yet, and what I mean by that is, in some discussions we had with the PRC, and I'm not, I'm going to come back to that area, but what they thought was important was, when we created that area, we shrunk it, we narrowed it somewhat originally because we added width to the pedestrian spine green space, because, and I think the PRC had a very valid comment there, was with that spine going there and that then being the launching to the next parcel in the north, they felt a good, healthy green space around there with the seating areas. They see that as more of a congregating area, so we wanted to focus on that. Now, getting back to the area you asked, we designate lawn area, but we know we could do something with it. I think it would be something in a passive sense, I mean, whether it's, you know, some type of gardens, you know, you know, whether it's, you know, butterfly gardens, something like that, you know, in other words, we know we got to, we want to come up with a detailed landscape plan for that of, of how that would be, but we see it as a passive space more than, you know, we're not going to like put a volleyball court in the middle of it, you know. We see it as a, you know, the primary goal was to break up the mass of the parking lot, but we also understand it provides an opportunity to provide an accent to the property.
Garden, take a walk?
Yep.
That kind of thing. Can you give us a list of other properties that Pastone manages that we might be able to go and see?
Sure, so Pastone manages many, I would say, at least 1,000 apartments, and I should fully be transparent and say that I started at Pastone in the beginning of June, so I can provide a list if that would be acceptable, so that I don't misspeak.
Something that's going to be as close to this, or?
So comparable.
Something comparable that we might be able to drive by and, and check out?
Yes, please. Oh, outside, Amy.
I went out for a minute for another meeting. Hi, my name is Amy Kishani, I'm the Senior Vice President of Pastone Corporation. We have, as Jason said, we have a lot of properties all over, properties that would be similar to this. We have, in Arundacoyt, we have a property called Holby Creek Apartments, that's a seniors' development. I think it's 60 units. It's on Brower Road, Brower and Culver, around there. In Grease, we have a 240-unit, a Phase 1 and a Phase 2, which are senior properties also called Ada Ridge Apartments, and those are off Long Pond Road. And we also, we own, we own a very large project in, in the city of Rochester, known as Andrew's Terrace Apartments. Those are for seniors and disabled, and that is also on Andrew Street. And let's see, I can go on and on, I can, I can mention some.
Any other workforce?
Workforce housing?
Yeah.
We have, in Gates, we have what's called Crerande 2, I'm not sure of the address, that is, that's in Gates, that is workforce housing.
What's it called?
Crerande 2.
C R?
C R, C R E R A N D, number two, and I can get you the, we can get you the address on that.
Okay.
Let's see, what else can, can I get, tell you? Workforce housing, we.
Or just affordable housing?
Or affordable housing, or affordable. We have Crerande 1 also, but I have to give you the address for that one as well. We have like 60 units, and then in Clarkson, we have 60 units of housing on West Avenue, one, it's on 199 Sunset Center Lane, that's a 30-unit project and a 36-unit project. We've had that for, that is approximately 20 years old, so right now, we're going through refinancing on that, so we're going to update, upgrade, and extend the useful life of that property for another 30 years. That is workforce housing, and let's see, I, we have properties all over the place. We have a property in Victor, I can, we can send you a package of all of our completed projects.
Yeah, I don't mean to put you on the spot right now, but some places that we could go, drive by, take a look at.
Absolutely, we, in Fairport, we, we partnered with DeMarco Construction, and we did a project called Crossman, Crossman, it's a preservat, it's an adaptive reuse of an older building, and it was for seniors, and I can, you know, I can get you all of these things.
Okay.
I just, I didn't have them with me right now, I'm sorry.
Understood, no, that's not a problem.
Are you interested in Pastone projects that have been in use for a while, or the ones newly constructed as well?
Honestly, both would be terrific.
Okay, well, Skyview?
Yeah, Skyview, well, that is not leased up yet, but we are, we're the developer of record for the Skyview Park Apartments, which is the old, the preservation of the old Sears Building at the Arundacoyt Mall.
Okay.
And what we're doing, we're working with Passaro on that, and Krista Construction on that one as well, that's 157 units of senior housing. It's occupied in two buildings. The adaptive reuse of the Sears Building is housing 80 units, and the The adaptive reuse of the Sears building is housing 80 units, and the new building is housing 78 units.
Right, it's a similar sized development. One is new construction, four story building, and another one, another part is rehab of the former Sears building.
Yeah.
Very interesting project. I highly recommend you to visit.
Is there a difference other than terminology between what's called, you know, termed as affordable housing versus workforce housing? Are there two different definitions, or is it essentially the same thing, just?
No, workforce housing is affordable housing, but it's usually termed for family housing. And, and the reason I didn't refer to workforce housing is because our Baird Road project is all seniors. So it's more of a senior project. Workforce housing is, is affordable, and it's, it's for service, you know, workers that are starting up, young people getting into the business. It's more family. It's, it's family housing because they, it's workforce, it's they're working. So that, that would be the difference, that would be the only difference. We, in our world, do not refer to senior housing as workforce housing. It's mostly people that are, families that are working.
Sure. Okay.
Anything else for me?
Not sure.
Well, I'll just be sitting down.
As soon as you sit down, I'm going to try and stump Peter and Jason, so you have to get back up. What other, you know, Jim, why don't you go, and I'll keep looking at my notes?
I don't have any questions, but I would like to compliment the project architect. I think the architectural design is very refreshing, and I think the color scheme and the way that you attempted to pull in and complement some of the other colors that are coming from the YMCA northbound is absolutely terrific. And I'm, for one, am delighted not to see any white siding on a building.
Thank you so much.
One question I have, I guess, on the lighting. Will you be putting in, let's say, landscape lane to uplight trees and some of the plant material to enhance the visual perspectives at night?
We've discussed that internally, you know, and I don't think we've rendered a final decision on that, whether that would be part of this or not. There has, there has been some internal discussion about it. To the positive, that it may, it may be a nice feature, but we want to be somewhat sensitive to the residential uses, but.
Sure. But that could be a nice feature for, A, the trees along the pedestrian spine, the trees to the east along 250, and even in the courtyards, to create a nice ambiance at night for residents.
Okay.
So it's nice sitting under.
Right.
Trees are lit up. Okay, I think I'd like to open this up to the public. I just lost my feed here.
While we're waiting here, Doug, has this package been sent to Chris Lopez?
It has not, not at this point. We will begin packaging up. We just received revised architectural study, so we'll get that packaged up with the existing, and this new package, we'll get it out to Chris for his review, as well as landscaping to Bruce Zratsky, our landscape consultant.
Okay, I'd like to remind everyone at home watching, or at a sports bar, wherever you are, I know it's a very popular show at sports bars. But we welcome your comments, and you can either comment by calling in at 585-340-8771, or comment in writing at penfield.org. And would anyone that's present here like to speak and comment on this application? Going once, going twice. Okay, let me just check our feeds on the web and on the call in. Okay, we currently don't have anyone, but I will.
Just remember, AJ, just remember, there's a little bit of delay on the people watching on the internet.
True. So while I'm saying that the public comment period will be held open for at least a period of seven days, we'll give people an opportunity, if you feel like calling in and commenting right now live, you're more than welcome to. I know, and I think we've asked this question before, moving the buildings to the south so that the fire department utilizes the roadway and the pavement from Penfield Square, refresh, I'm 99% sure we discussed this before.
We did at Sketch Plan Review. The prohibitive component of that is the 36 inch Manil County Water Authority Transmission main that runs right along our south property line, and it's on a 50-foot easement. We couldn't get the buildings close enough to that existing pavement to serve as a fire lane.
Okay. That's right. That's a shame, but.
Jeff was okay with that?
He is okay with this layout that we have shown, yes. As of the most recent PRC review, we've made a point to ask a couple times to be sure, obviously.
Okay. Still don't have any calls, so. Okay. We have an inbound call. While that's coming through, I noticed that the renderings that you've submitted, that at least we have printed out, the three dimensional renderings and some of the plan view aren't exactly the same. Will those be updated, or?
Yes, because as, as you know, our standard practice will be when we provide the written responses to PRC comments for your works, your August workshop session, we'll be sure that, as we address those comments, everything coordinates, for lack of a better term, yes.
Okay. Okay, great.
AJ, for your reference, some of the drawings that we're showing, that we've been pulling up as PDFs, we did receive just prior to the meeting, so we did get them organized, and we got them in our system, but they weren't printed out.
Got it. We're waiting for the caller. Okay, we have Heather on line one. And Heather, if you could please state your name, full name and address for the record, that would be terrific, and then we'd love to hear your comments. So go ahead.
Sure, my name, oh, sorry, my name is Heather Ross, and I live at 87 Aspen Drive in Rochester.
Okay.
Yes, and I just had a couple questions about this project in relation to the garden, senior housing. I have a mother who visits places where this project will take place. So right now, it's farmland, and my first question is currently there are trees that she views from her balcony. Will those trees remain between the gardens and this project?
So she's currently in Penfield Square?
Yes, that's.
And she looks to the north?
She looks to, she'll be overlooking this project, yeah?
Okay.
North, right. And then there are trees currently, and I'm wondering if there will be a nice view, like a tree line that remains between the gardens and this project.
Okay, I think, Peter, would you like to address that at the moment?
I can, in the fact that, but if, and hopefully I understand the question correctly. That same water authority easement prevents us from doing any clearing along the property line. So whatever vegetation is along the common property line is going to remain, because we just can't, we can't get in there and do any grading. On the other hand, Doug brought up the area, if we're talking about the trees around the Wickham Home, as you see there, those will be removed, obviously, because the home is being removed also.
But new trees are planted around the site.
Exactly. And all the trees, the majority of the trees along the west property line to the left will remain, because those are in the DEC regulated area. And as we mentioned, we're staying out of that area.
Okay.
Gotcha. So those trees will remain, and I had one more question on this. You can, you keep that visual up. Between the two properties, there's a square. I just see like a concrete square, and I'm hoping that's not like basketball courts or something that's going to be really loud for the senior population. I can't tell what that square is going to be.
Are you saying between the two buildings?
Yes, what is that?
So that is the flex recreation space, for lack of a better term. In other words, it doesn't have an identified specific use, but it is a hard surface area, as we mentioned, could be used for pickleball or things like that. But what I can tell you is, the concern that's raised here has been discussed with our team, because Past Stone has the same concern, from the standpoint of, and no disrespect to the caller, but there will be families living in these buildings on site that will actually be closer to the space. Point being is, you're right, they don't want somebody bouncing a basketball out there at 10 o'clock at night while they're trying to put a three-year-old to sleep. So that'll be, you know, I don't know what the right word is, you know, managed, its use.
Taken into strong consideration.
Exactly.
Perfect. I know some seniors, you know, they like to go to bed early, but as do little children, so I totally, I think we're on the same page. And then where is, my last question is, where is the playground for the daycare? I can't tell.
Yeah, it's that gray area he's circling now, just off the corner of the western
Gotcha, over there. Do we have any other questions? No, that's been very helpful, I really appreciate it.
Sure.
Thank you so much.
Thank you very much for the call, Heather.
Bye-bye.
Okay, bye-bye. Okay, let me just do another quick check. Scotty down in the engine room, do you have any more callers? Brian, are you there?
Yep, I'm here, can you hear me?
Yes, sir. If you could just state your name, full name and address for the record, that'd be terrific.
Sure, Brian Groundy at 19 Finchwood Lane. I was just wondering what school district the, this would be in, and if there is any thought into, would we have to expand that school? I guess specifically the elementary school, and I think middle school and high school is self-explanatory, but elementary school, and then again, if there is any thought of how that impacts that school district. Thanks.
It is in the Webster School District.
Webster School District?
Yes, that is correct. Yes.
Oh, it's, it's not in the Penfield, it's in the Webster.
These properties along here, the YMCA is sort of the southernmost point of the Webster School District. So this line right, right along here.
So Webster School District, both the Penfield and the Webster School Districts, I'm going to say, if I'm not incorrect, staff and attorney, that there were interested parties and interested agencies during the mixed use plan development and code creation. So they are aware of what the district is proposed to contain, and typically should be planning accordingly. Did I answer your question okay?
Yeah, just specifically what elementary school would, would it be in?
That, I'm not sure.
Yeah, I'm not particularly sure on which elementary school this goes to. The schools do their own internal redistricting. I know the outer boundaries for the Webster School District, and I know the inner boundaries a little bit more for Penfield. I'm not as familiar with Webster, but they do their own shifting as they need to move kids between the multiple elementary schools.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Have a good night. Okay, let me just quick check one more time here. All right, we don't have any written comments. Give the opportunity for anyone sitting here live to come up and be a television star. And do we have? Another, nope. Okay. Thank you very much for your presentation. Nice job. Thank you, Board, for coming in and doing your job, and we will call this hearing closed.
Great. Thank you very much.
Appreciate your time.
Thank you.
Have a great night, everyone. We'll give it maybe two minutes and reconvene for finishing up our business for the, for Any initial comments? I think, obviously, we're going to table this application for additional submissions and review.
Overall, I think it's a good project. I wish we knew whether it was going to be.
Microphone.
Overall, I think it was a good project, or is a good project. I wish we knew whether the applicant was going to build a three or a four story building.
Agreed.
Because that will make a difference on nonresidential space. I do have a concern about the indoor storage of garbage. With vermin and odor control and so forth.
Let me just share some things with you. We have, we have projects all around New York City, not in the city proper, but in and around Rockland and Westchester Counties. Number one, they don't have the room, and number two, most of these communities don't permit exterior dumpsters. They all have trash rooms, and the trash rooms work very, very well. They have odor control, they, they increase the frequency with which the trash service comes and empties the totes and brings new totes. They have odor control, they have pest control. I have, I have no concern about this at all. And in fact, in a lot of these, and some of these projects are workforce housing projects, affordable housing projects, and typically what they'll do is have a trash room, and then immediately adjacent to that, they might have a bike room. So, you know, people can come down and they can toss their trash or their recyclables in there and get on their bike and, and, you know, go to work, or go to the playground, or whatever they wanted to do, and they, they work very well.
Okay, as long as it's designed properly.
Well, that's not what we're here to discuss, but yeah. I have no concern, in fact, I'm, I'm surprised that we're not seeing more projects without exterior dumpsters, because quite frankly, the dumpsters always end up being an eyesore for us. They're, they're never maintained as well as the, the buildings proper, and it's always kind of this, this appendage piece of pavement and, and.
Right.
So.
Right.
But I, I think, I think that the team did a really good job of listening to, you know, obviously, addressing the comments that the PRC came up with, but also listening to some of the comments that we provided in those Zoom meetings, and I think they've done a really credible job of trying to address those things in a way that, that, that will probably work maybe a little bit more tweaking. I, I agree with you that, that large green space needs to do something to just have lawn areas, you know.
Right.
Maybe, maybe not, not really sustainable, and.
Right, a lot of times that'll turn into a field with debris.
You know, I don't know, I don't know to the extent that this board wants to, to kind of control or regulate these things, but it seems appropriate that the town might ask them to better define what they. ask them to better define what they might do with that front court area, not necessarily limiting them to certain things, but perhaps limiting the time of day that it's in operation during the week or on weekends and things like that, because that's-
You're talking about the flex court here between building one and the-
Building one and building two, yeah. And, and you know, similarly, I, I didn't mention this to Peter, but, so any of those outdoor recreation spaces that they have have to be handicap accessible. So where you have games and things that are designed for able-bodied persons, you have to have something equivalent for persons with disabilities. And then they've got, you know, to have the, the children's playground area on the front of the building, that's always a little bit of a challenge. We just, we just finished designing one for a charter school in the town of Gates, and buffering's kind of a challenge there. But in that case, of course, the, the kids are only there during school, and, and they're not there in the summer, and this time, you know, they're probably going to be there year-round, well, at least, you know, weather permitting. And all of that playground equipment and the walkable surfaces have to be handicap accessible. And there's a, there's a noise function and a, and a, and a timing component to that too. So, you know, maybe, maybe we ask Pathstone to give us something that becomes part of the public record about how they intend to address these things and what the hours of operation are similar to what we ask other applicants.
One, one thing I forgot to ask, because Bob usually does, but the electric vehicle charging stations?
Yeah.
I mean, they're becoming more and more and more popular.
Yes.
And, and, and that's the future.
Well, they're required now.
But how many?
It's a, it's a function of-
I don't know the percent.
Doug, you might know. It's a function of the number of spaces.
I don't know off the top of my head.
Yeah, I can look it up for you, but they are required, but more importantly than that, NYSERDA still has incentive programs for installing electrical vehicle charging stations. So we typically end up with more charging stations than state regulations would require, because more and more people are buying electrical cars-
Right.
-and, and they get a good portion of the cost of installing them rebated by NYSERDA.
Right. I, I would think the infrastructure for that post-build is, is difficult.
Much more challenging than-
I, I, you know, so I, I would recommend that they add more than what's required by code. That's just me thinking out loud.
I don't know that we can tell them to do that.
I think 10 years from now, it's going to be a much higher percentage than, well, it will be a much higher percentage than it is today vehicles on the road. I mean, Ford has come out with a pickup truck. That's, I understand it's, it's phenomenal.
Yeah, I saw that magazine.
The F-150 Lightning, and there's two versions. The, the heavy-duty one has got, I think it's over 400-mile range, and that's with a 1,000-pound payload in the bed.
Hmm.
So, yeah, they're making a lot of progress on these.
Yeah.
So, and Bob is normally the one, the proponent for that, the advocate.
So you're speaking in his stead.
I'm speaking on, on Bob's behalf, yes.
You know, I think, I think what you're talking about is really going to be a consumer demand issue.
Yep.
If, if a developer like this puts in six charging stations and 10 years down the road, they have demand for 16, they'll be putting them in-
They're going to put the 10 more.
...because they're going to need to rent spaces and dwelling units.
Right.
Right, yeah.
So.
Okay. So we want to issue a tabling resolution?
I'll, I'll, I'll motion to, to table with, with the comments we've, we've made.
Okay.
I'll second.
Okay. Moved and seconded.
Hetskey.
Hetskey, aye.
Bastian.
Bastian, aye.
Burton.
Burton, aye.
Okay. Any other new or old business that we need to discuss this evening?
That's all I have, all the business I have for you guys tonight.
All right. Thank you, everyone, for attending. Hope you have a great rest of the month, great weekend, and we will adjourn.
All right.
Thank you.